Okay, the lights on folks, so we will get started and welcome everyone this evening. So we're kind of having a beautiful fall day outside, so thank you for wanting to come indoors this evening. So I'll call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, could we get a roll call, please?
Kellum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Sykes?
Yes.
Kanopa?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
All right, thank you. And we actually have kind of a quick agenda this evening. So first for scheduled business is we have a few public hearings. And the first one we have is going to be over our Albany Transit System fare increase. So at 7:16 PM, I will open the public hearing, and could we get staff report?
That'll be me, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. So we met with council in May of this year to discuss several transit items, and one of those items was a potential fare increase. At the time, the council directed us to bring back a fare increase of 50 cents for the regular fare for Albany Transit System, which would raise fare from $1 to $1.50 for regular fare. And then the discounted fares would be raised proportionately as well. Fees for paratransit were to be kept where they are today, which is $2 per ride. In the memo, I discussed a little bit about the impacts of fare increases in transit systems. Typically, when you increase fare, you tend to lose ridership a little bit. And this would probably be especially true in the Albany Transit System, where the majority of the riders are low-income to very low-income customers. So what we would expect to see happen is a decrease in ridership that tends to rebound about a year or so, and then the riders at some point will be able to make up that difference, hopefully, in fare. So we estimate, based on that, and given the point in the fiscal year where we are, that in this fiscal year, we would only bring in probably about $6,000 or so in extra revenue, $6,000 to $8,000. And in a full year of operating, we might bring in as much as an additional $14,000 in fare revenue with this increase. The other item I want to bring up, this in the memo, is the availability of the new funds under House Bill 2017. So House Bill 2017 created a new dedicated funding source for public transit called the STIF funds, or State Transportation Improvement Fund. Those funds will be distributed to, in our case, to Lynn and Benton Counties, where we will then be able to apply for some of that funding for transit operations. The funding was developed with certain legislative goals, to expand or improve transit performance throughout the state, and in particular, to focus on access to transit for low-income families and students. Both the staff from Lynn and Benton County have reminded me that the legislative goal of this funding is in particular to focus on the availability of transit for low-income riders. And as such, although they haven't developed their rules for applying for the funding, it would probably be counterproductive to raise fares and then apply for STIF funding. The STIF money can be used as local match for federal operating grants, and the potential to apply for STIF funding is in the up to hundreds of thousands of dollars for Albany Transit System annually. For that reason, given the relatively small amount that this fare increase is predicted to generate, and the potential negative impact on our applications for STIF funding, I'd ask the council to consider the fare increase carefully, and then advise us as to what you'd like us to do.
Okay, Rich?
I was in the county meeting today, Tuesday, and they discussed this very thing. It's my understanding that the county will be the organization that holds onto the funds, and we have to impress enough to get the funds. I would recommend that we put this off for a week, and reach out to the county and find out what their thought process is. I can do that pretty simply. My thought, and some of what I hear back from the county, is a big priority for them is getting all the various transportation agencies within the area to all line up, so that if you're, you can start in Corvallis on Lynn-Benton Loop and come here and hit the Lynn-Benton shovel, or the whatever it is, and have some semblance of, we're not making them wait all day, if there is a way for that to happen more reasonably. So it's kind of up in the air, but I would recommend that we hold off for a week unless there is some gun at our head.
Yeah, I have no problem with what Rich is suggesting also, but I was reading through your recommendations, and what the resolution says, you would be recommending ostensibly that we would remove just the increase on the ATS, but do maintain the Colorado and Lynn-Benton Loop, as it's written on the resolution.
The proposal tonight is, well, at the council meeting in May, we aren't proposing any changes to the Loop fare or the Colorado fare, only to Albany Transit.
So basically, it would be just, you know, delay this for a week or so to get some more information from county. I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item, the Albany Transit System fare increase? Okay, not seeing anyone. Should we just go ahead and continue, keep the public hearing open, and then bring this back at the next council meeting?
That's fine, Mayor.
Okay, is that okay with the council?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, are they going to try and make schedules mesh with train schedules and bus schedules?
That was not discussed, however, I think it's probably a good idea to bring that up. I mean, the guy who's doing it is riding pretty high. Well, he is excited about it, let's put it that way.
Nice to have excited.
So I will convey that, if that's all right with the council?
Thank you.
Okay, so the, we will have the, public hearing will be continued until the next meeting then. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, this is public hearing, which is 7:23 PM. I'm opening this one up. At authorizing the sale of city-owned, we're continuing it, it's a continuance, so it's still open until the next meeting will close.
Sorry.
Yeah. This is authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property, and we have a staff report on this one.
I'm not sure who this is. Is this, is this Seth? Okay, well, I don't know.
No, this is you, Ed.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the agenda and I found the wrong one. I'm sorry.
Yep.
I sort of blanked out. Sorry, guys.
Your part property.
Yep, got it. Okay. Hey, I'm up. The council is asked tonight to hold a public hearing on the sale of two lots, two parcels, that are shown on Exhibits A and B in your packet. The property was received as part of a larger donation in 2013. One acre of the 94 that was donated lies between homes on 37th Avenue and 39th Avenue, which forms our southern border for this one-acre piece of property. In 2016, the property, part of that one-acre property was sold at the council's request, and at the time, we didn't have buyers for the remainder. Well, since then, we have buyers for the remainder. And so we're asking you tonight to hold a public hearing, and once the public hearing is closed, adopt a motion in support of the sale of these properties. The memo that I've shared with you tonight indicates the total value of those two lots. One thing that I probably should share with you or remind you of, which we stated originally with the sale in 2016, is that these two parcels, which would be incorporated into the lots to the north, just as a lot line adjustment, these, this property really can't be developed. There are restrictions on the development of these two lots. They can only be of value to the people to the north. To develop this would be very expensive, would require the building of a brand-new street to our standards, as well as new utilities to be extended, making it cost-prohibitive to actually develop a lot here. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have. Well, I should note also, just for the record, that per state regulations, we did post-advertise the public hearing on September 20 in the local newspaper, and we have received no comment, no concerns expressed to this point.
Okay, any questions? All right, is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? This is the item that tax lots that Ed is describing for authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus property. Okay, not seeing anyone with that. Then 7:27 PM, I'll close a public hearing on this item. And council, what would you like to do with this item? Any comments, questions?
Authorize the sale.
Yeah, move to have the city manager execute the deed and related documents to the sale of the property.
Okay.
And there's a second?
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed. And about 7:28 PM, I will open the public hearing on authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus real property. This one is a handout that is in front of you this evening, council, and I think we have Seth coming up to talk about this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Given that this body also is on the A, excuse me, oh, sorry.
Separate.
That this body is also on the Albany Revitalization Agency, you'll probably recognize this property. We typically refer to it as a Labor Temple property. It was acquired by the Albany Revitalization Agency through foreclosure about three years ago, and that agency went ahead and authorized staff to pursue sale of the property as well, which we did. However, after appraising the property, listing it, publicly noticing the property, and receiving a full-price offer on it, we discovered that in the process of the foreclosure proceedings, that the property was actually misrecorded as being owned by the City of Albany, and not the Albany Revitalization Agency, the ARA. Therefore, it's considered excess property, and the request of you this evening is to honor the offer that we have, that we're actually in a contract with, which is pending approval by the council this evening. Are there any questions that have to entertain this?
Questions?
As Ed noted as well, the other property, I just wanted to note that this has been publicly noticed. We received no comment on it. We followed all the rules that pertain to listing the property.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad the price that we got up it, because we were almost thinking, you know, questioning which price, and so I think this was very good price, so, yeah, thank you for that negotiating, so. Okay, is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? This is the 222 3rd Avenue Southeast property. Okay, not seeing anyone, so at 7:29 PM, almost 7:30, I'll say, I'll close a public hearing. And council, what would you like to do with this item? Do you have questions?
I have a question for you, council.
Okay.
Because this was recorded incorrectly originally, do we have any, I don't know, problem that could hit us in the side of the head by us taking it, and then we have to give the money to ARA?
No. What happened, the reason it was recorded, it wasn't necessarily recorded incorrectly. What happened was, we were in the process of filing a lawsuit to foreclose the property from the owner, and they went in and executed a deed in lieu of foreclosure. They did it on their own and went and recorded it without telling us, and then told us after the fact, I've already given this property back to the city. So it was their error, they didn't know what to put in it. But no, we're not bound to.
When originally, the work was done, and we made, well, Kara Era gave monies to someone to deal with that place.
Right.
And my question here, do we have to give the money back to Kara Era? Because they're the place where the money came from.
Well, yeah, the money came from Kara, that it should go back into that account. That was the intent, so yeah.
Thank you. With that, council.
Any other questions?
Answered it.
Okay, what would you like to do?
Move to approve the transfer of title.
Second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. Took care of the public hearings. Next is business from the public. Is there anyone here? Yes, Sharon?
I come here with a question tonight.
Okay, can you state your name, Sharon? Spoil your last name and your address.
Sharon Giesler, 728 10th Avenue in Albany.
Thank you.
And my question is, in March, when the council passed the enhanced enforcement ordinance, there was certainly discussion, and I remember Bessie actually asked for it, that there would be a review in six months. And I'm here tonight to ask if there's a plan to do that, and if that's going to happen.
I think it's kind of been pushed out. I'll let the city attorney respond, because they're, within the six months, you still have to have court dates, so he can explain that.
Right, so when we passed it in March, we, you're going to have, you'd had to have people who got convicted of three or more crimes within a six-month period. I guess it could, in theory, could happen within the first day. If somebody committed three crimes the first day of the ordinance, then it would be within six months, and they could be excluded. But at this point, there's only been a handful, literally, of people who have been cited under the ordinance, and we were in some discussions right now of possibly modifying some of the way it's written, so we have not, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago with the judge, actually, to see how it's going. We haven't got all the information back yet, so once we do, we're probably looking sometime end of the year, that we would take a look at it, be able to report back to council.
But it is under review all the time, under monitoring, gathering data?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sharon. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Council, next you have your consent calendar, and this is items for one and two, and if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next you have a report, this is item D, and this is request to authorize an additional one FTE for transportation assistant position. So Chris is issue?
That's me again. I have to get there on my fancy electronic device. Okay, which I'm not there yet, hang on a second, sorry. Okay, technology. So in the Ask Me contract, there's a provision that when a city temporary employee works more than half-time, there's actually a typo in my memo, I apologize, it, when a city employee works more than half-time for three years, then the contract requires that we come to the council and request that a regular position be created. In July, the Human Resource Department was doing some research on temporary employees, and found that we have a paratransit employee who worked almost three-quarter time for three years. And the reason for that is simply the demand in service in Colorado has gone up. We only have two full-time drivers, and then we rely on volunteers and a small group of temporary paid employees. So we're here tonight to request the addition of a full-time position, an additional transportation assistant position in paratransit. And we looked at just creating a .75 FTE to sort of match what this employee had been doing, but there are a couple reasons why we're requesting a full-time employee rather than three-quarter time. One is, as I said, there's increasing demand for the work, and financially, under the law, a three-quarter time employee gets the same medical benefits as a full-time employee. So there's really not a big financial difference between a three-quarter time employee and a full-time employee. Adding another full-time employee will provide, you know, additional work, hopefully relieve some of the work the temporary pool is doing, and keep the supervisor in the office instead of out chasing down problems, so that's our request tonight. There's adequate funds, and this position is, what's that?
In the budget?
Yes, there's adequate funds this year in the budget, and this position is grant-reimbursable, just like the other positions as well.
Okay. Questions? Okay, council?
Move to approve the addition of the full-time from three-quarters.
Second.
Okay, there's a second, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Business from the council, Bessie, anything this evening?
No, I just want to say that it's nice to have the downtown streets pretty well finished. Now I can go to church and not be approached every time, like, when are they going to finish? When are they going to finish? And I'm just like, I don't know. So it's nice, and it drives very, very well, so hopefully, people are pleased.
Yeah, there was a nice kudos on one of the Facebook pages about, boy, the downtown just looking so nice and clean and finished, and really, really praised it, so it was nice to see that. Okay, all right, is that it, Bessie?
Did we skip item two? There's like three resolutions there?
Which one? Or, oh no, that's a part of the consent calendar.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You all discussed part of it?
C is a consent calendar, so it was one and two under C.
I saw Karen back there, so I figured there'd be some big presentation, slideshow.
Did you have any questions?
I think you should ask her to come do it anyway.
Yeah.
Did you have any questions?
No, I read the information, and everything looked fine. I just, in my mind, was thinking we had to discuss, so sorry.
Okay.
No, I agree.
Yeah, no, so C would be consent calendar, so one and two are underneath item C. Okay, anything else, Bill?
No.
All right, Dick?
No.
Okay, Rich?
I have a couple things. Got a phone call today from a gentleman that lives on the corner of Clover Ridge and Trinity. I think he's probably talked to you. And in the process, he was complaining about trucks going around the corner, too fast, too many, going over the curb, on his lawn, well, I didn't see the lawn, I went out and looked. I didn't see it on his lawn, but tire tracks on the curb, tire tracks on the, and I asked the people on the other end, who is this, what's happening? They suggested that, well, they have to go that way because something or another, and I, I guess what that did is drive questions for me, and I guess I would ask that staff check out to see that they are doing what they're supposed to do. He was talking about them working on Sunday, it was his understanding that they were not supposed to be hammering and whatever on Sunday in the area, and starting before 7:00 and going after 6:00, and I don't know, it just needs checked out.
Right, I think I have talked with him.
Have talked to some of it there.
Yeah, and I sent it off to Miles Bredner, and then he had, I think with Emory and Sons, they worked, they were going to put up more signs, that's what ended, that was a part of that conversation, was getting more signage. So anything else that I don't know of, that, unless you do, Jeff, if you've heard any other?
Driving trucks and pups, while they say it's very difficult and yada-yada, it's not difficult at all if you do it right. I mean, it's just a matter of slowing down, going up, making a square corner, so you don't go over the curb with the pup trailer.
Staff spoken with that individual a number of times, spoken with the contractors, spoken with the property owner, we can do so again.
I guess, I'd like to know that, well, I understand someone is being disturbed while it's going on. It is a pain, but I'd like to know that the contractor is in fact doing what they're supposed to do. Thank you for that.
Okay.
And a second thing, I heard, and this is with you, Mayor, that city staff was driving you around. And I guess, when, in 2016, there was a city staff member that wanted to help me with my campaign, and I was, I'd kind of gone down that road before and got shoved away, well, the thought got shoved out of my head, because it could be so problematic from what I, I spoke with the then, the then-city manager, and he said, oh, don't do that, don't do that, don't do that, even though it's in the evening, and so forth. So, I mean, I heard this from a couple, three different places, and I don't think it is appropriate if, I don't care whether or not you're getting something out of it, if the, if it looks like you're getting something out of it is the problem. If you're getting the extra whatever, I mean, say, I mean, you know that there are people who will take that to the nth degree, and while that would be an ethics violation if it was true, and, 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 it would be a different problem for the city if the city was, if you were at that point doing anything political, because then they could point out and say, hey, listen, the city is now helping somebody to get elected, and, you know, we don't want to go that, down that road either, so.
So I guarantee there's nothing political.
Yeah.
So the only, I have not been driven to a meeting in any city vehicle, so it has been, some staff members have, you know, with their own car, given me a ride to a city meeting. So all my other meetings have been friends, other people to be able to take me to those meetings, but there's been no city vehicle that has taken me to anything, and it's nothing politically.
Nothing in the middle of the day, when they would normally be working.
So, no, actually, Marilyn has picked me up and brought me to City Hall on her way back from lunch, so that's her time. Marilyn was coming down here to City Hall, swung by and picked me up, so that's it. I mean, Peter picked me up, took me, because we had an event over at the coast, in his car. He's going to League of Oregon Cities in the morning, and is going to give me a ride down there, but there's been no city vehicle, and there's been nothing that is political. It's strictly my duties for going to city meetings.
Well, I think you missed the part where I said, it could appear to be, because you know, there are people out in the outer audience someplace, who will use whatever excuse to scream. And it is not the fact that there is something wrong happening, it is the appearance that is also sitting right alongside. that is also sitting right alongside. Anyway, I've had my say.
Well, it's unfortunate that people would have that thought in a negative way, but, or thinking that it would be some sort of gain, but it has been very challenging for several months of trying to be able, everywhere I'm going, trying to be able to get rides. And it's going to be probably another month, according to the doctor today, before I can be able to get behind a wheel. So, I didn't bring this on myself to be in this situation, and I'm trying to do the best I can.
You can say you didn't.
But I don't exactly want to be paying for Uber to be going to every meeting all over town, and/or paying for rides out of my pocket.
Well, but someone else is.
I mean, I think if the council feels that's something that I should be doing, then I'll pay for it out of my pocket. But, I mean, it's been the kindness of people's hearts of wanting to help out to be able to get me to meetings.
Two levels of concern. One, how people out there view it. The other is whether or not people feel obligated because of your position, because you're the mayor. Now...
All they have to do is say no.
You know, they said that about all kinds of things in the industry, and people went to jail. It's not, it's not whether or not it's reasonable, it's whether or not somebody sees it that way.
Well, and I think probably, folks that I have been having to ask, they've been, actually, it's been the kindness to help out, and they know that it's been very difficult for me to even ask. So, it has not been easy.
Well, there's a difference between you asking that they help you, and them volunteering. I mean, that's, one has no pressure on it, the other does.
Counselor and Mayor, if I may weigh in, in most of the instances when I have given you a ride, it's been me volunteering, because she lives in my neighborhood, she's on my route. It's just convenient, more convenient for me than probably anybody else on the staff. And I give her, I do not get any mileage reimbursement for the use of my own car, and I have not since 2007. I'm doing it as, simply as a convenience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else, Rich?
That's more than enough.
Okay, all right.
Just one comment from the Friday notes that we got from Peter. It was sad to read that Bob Richardson is departing our community, and there will be some big shoes to fill. And I hope we're in the process of trying to find a qualified candidate. It even came up at our AAMPO meeting this morning, they're still struggling to try and find the head of that after several years, because of the limited number of people in that job classification. But, you know, we're, both communities are, how do I put it politely, poaching from each other to try and attract good quality people. And if somebody has an opportunity, you can't hold them back, but it still makes it difficult in each community to find qualified people to take their place.
Okay, yep, I agree, yep. So, thank you, Ray. Mike, anything?
No.
Okay, and, no, I just had to remind you that it'll be at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. It starts tomorrow, and Bessie, you're still going? Are you going tomorrow, or?
Well, I plan on it, but they're having problems with my confirmation from my hotel.
Oh.
So it's like, okay, I'll make sure that I have, you know, the confirmation before I go, but I do plan, so might be prepared in case I don't make it to vote.
So, so I think they, I heard the Hilton was full, and then a lot of people had to try to find another location.
Yeah, I had something at the Valley River Hotel, but then, they said they had a cancellation, and I was on the cancellation. And so, I think right now, they said I have to call in the morning, but I think it's canceled in one place and not confirmed in another, so it's like I may be sleeping on the streets. But I plan on going, but we'll see.
I'm not staying overnight, just going back and forth.
No, I stay overnight because it's...
Yeah, so, I have to sleep in a recliner still, so I'm not hauling down a recliner to a hotel, so, so I got to go back and forth. But Mike, are you still, are you going tomorrow, or?
Going tonight.
Oh, going tonight, yeah.
And I planned on coming back Friday, Friday night, because of other commitments that are going on.
Are you taking one of the tours?
Tours for what? No.
Oh, you're not taking the tours?
No, I ain't taking no tour. I've seen the city.
You've seen it all.
It's just Eugene, right?
Yeah, just the home of the ducks.
All right, so that's it. Ed, anything?
Mayor, we got a comment.
Yeah.
I'd like to volunteer and offer you a ride anytime you need to go someplace. And you're going to have to call me up, and I don't think to be out of line calling you up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Dick.
I want you writing me a city card.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, you didn't have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, staff, have anything else? Have anything? Okay. With that, I have a little script to read here, folks, and this is because we're going into executive session. But, the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation or litigation likely to be filed pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room at this time. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Okay, thank you, folks.